We'll get started in just a moment. Let folks file in. Luis, I'm promoting you. Panelists should be able to turn this down.
Should we start?
I handed over to you, Chair, and Adina. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. Welcome to the Thursday, October 6, 2022, regular meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the provisions Assembly Bill 361, which allows attendance by members of the planning commission, city staff, and the public to participate and to conduct the meeting by teleconference. Teleconference locations are not open to the public. To provide a comment during the meeting, please use the raise hand function indicating you would like to speak, and you will be unmuted in order during the times reserved for public comment. You will have three minutes to make your comments. You may also email PCcomments@ssf.net or call 650-829-4669. And we will read into the record emails or message comments that you provide. Please note that all commission time limits and rules of decorum will apply to public comments. This meeting of the South San Francisco Planning Commission is hereby called to order. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we please have roll call?
Yes. Chairperson Shahadeh.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Zhang.
Here.
Commissioner Faria.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Funes.
Here.
And Commissioner De Paz Fernandez.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nope, no changes tonight.
Does any member of the public wish to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda tonight at this time? Please use the raise hand feature to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments or if there are any comments received by email or voicemail.
We've not received comments by email or voicemail, and we do not have any raised hands.
If I just interrupt, isn't item number four being continued?
Yes, well, we'll continue it when we get to that item.
Okay, just so the commission is aware that that is the plan.
Thank you, clerk. Hearing no speakers, we will move on. Next on the agenda is the disclosure of X or K communications. If any commissioner has had any communication with applicants, did any site or project visits, had interactions with third parties, or has any conflicts regarding any items on the agenda, you may disclose them at this time. If you would like to refuse yourself for an item, you can also do that at this time. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item. Next on the agenda is a consent calendar. May we have a listing of the consent calendar items, please?
Yes, item number one is consideration of draft minutes from the September 15, 2022 Planning Commission. Item number two is consideration of draft minutes from the August 9, 2022 Joint City Council and Planning Commission Study Session.
Does any commissioner wish to pull an item from consent? None? Does any member of the public wish to address the commission on an item on the consent calendar at this time? Please use the raise hand feature to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments or if there are any comments received by email or voicemail.
We have no raised hands, and we have not received any email or voicemail comments.
Thank you. Public hearing. Item number three.
We need to vote.
Oh, sorry.
To the chair, we should take a vote on consent items.
I make a motion. We approve the consent calendar. Thank you.
Second.
My second.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Chairperson Shahadeh.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Faria.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Funes.
Yes.
And Commissioner De Paz Fernandez.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing. Claire, do we need to make that comment now or?
So we should go to the first public hearing item, open the public hearing, and then after the stop, a public comment can be taken.
Okay. I'll clip with these. Read item.
Item number three is report regarding consideration of a use permit to convert an existing indoor warehouse to personal storage at 1349 San Mateo Avenue in the mixed industrial zoning district in accordance with Title 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code and determination that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And Victoria Kim, Associate Planner, will present this item, and I don't know if the commission has met Victoria. So I would like, I think we should do an introduction. I'd like to introduce Victoria Kim. She's our new Associate Planner. She's been with us since April. She came from Monterey County, and she's, and she also worked previously in Lake County as well, so has a fair amount of local government experience, and she is absolutely wonderful, and we are thrilled she's here. And she's a big asset for the Planning Division for the city.
Welcome, Victoria.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, the Chair, Vice Chair, and the Planning Commissioners. It's my pleasure to meet the Planning Commission for the first time, and it's been great to work at the Planning Division. I'm very excited to be part of the team. And should I continue my presentation?
Yeah.
If you share Shahadeh, you can open the public hearing.
Yeah. Public hearing is open now.
I'm gonna share my screen. Let me. Can you see my share screen?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. So the project that I'm going to present today is for the use permit, requesting the change of the existing use from indoor warehouse to personal storage. Before the presentation, I'd like to mention about errata to the attachment number two to include conditions of approval from the fire department. The project site is located at 1349 San Mateo Avenue, designated as mixed industrial zoning district. The property is developed with an existing two-story, 20-foot-tall building next to a science and technology company on the south and a self-storage building on the north. The applicant is also the owner of the north self-storage property, and the project is an extension of the applicant's personal storage residence. The use permit application is requesting to convert the indoor warehouse to personal storage with 129 units and an office space. There would not be any exterior modification, and the existing parking lot in the east of the site would be restricted to provide five parking spaces and one accessible parking stall. And here are the 16 warehouse floor plans. These are the proposed floor plans with the personal storage units. The city zoning ordinance requires 10% of the lot for landscaping in mixed industrial zoning district. The existing structure on the site is more than 60% lot coverage, and with the minimum parking requirements, the project provides 469 square foot landscaping areas, which is approximately 3% of the site. Due to the limitations, planning staff has included the cultural arts fee as a condition of approval for the rest of the landscaping requirement. And you can find this as planning condition number three in attachment number two. According to the operation plan, the proposed business hours would be 9:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. from Monday to Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. Access to the personal storage is from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day. There would be three employees for the project. Therefore, staff recommends that planning commission determine that the project is categorically exempt under the SEQA guidelines and approve the use permit based on the attached draft findings and the updated conditions of approval. For closing comments, I want to invite the applicant, Emilio Arco. Is Emily here? Okay.
Hear me? Good. Hello. Good evening, everyone. Introduce myself. My name's Emilio Arco. I'm a proud business owner here in the city of South San Francisco for nearly 40 years. I'm a few months away from 40 years. When I started, obviously, in South City, I was 18 years old, had a lot more hair, no gray hair, and a little few pounds. But again, it's been a great ride being here in South City, and anybody knows me, I call this home base for me, South San Francisco. I started the auto body business, Arco's Auto Body, right here in South City, which is still operating. I did sell that off to my employees, and I did start the self-storage about 18 years ago, and that's obviously done well for me, too, where I'm just expanding the self-storage. Is the need for self-storage is here with all the high-rise condos and apartment buildings that have gone up? Everybody needs the extra space where to be able to store things, and obviously, space is very much in demand, and it seems like that's not going anywhere soon, especially with the amount of high-rises you see going up in South San Francisco. The 1349 building, obviously, as she mentioned, it is like an extension to our existing property. It is a good fit, too, for storage, mainly because the footprint of the building and the lack of parking with storage, you don't need much parking, so it really works really hand-in-hand. Plus, we have all the additional parking next door if anybody needed it. So that makes it a, you know, a nice fit for the two working together. And as obviously, South City continues to grow, the need will continue to grow, and the few storage facilities that are in existence right now in the South San Francisco area all have been close to completely full occupancy or in the high occupancies. So again, it's just something that it's a, it's a need that the city will continue to have, and being it's in an enclosed concrete building, I think it's a lot cities like that better because it's more cleaner, more than the small little individual storages that you see more in the, out in the open land areas when you travel. Again, I want to thank you guys for considering, considering this and giving me the opportunity, and also, if anybody's ever done business with me over the 40 years and seen how I keep up with a facility, I'm very meticulous. I keep everything nice and clean, painted nice. So again, it definitely would not be nice, or it would be kept up same as I've done almost for 40 years here in the city. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Amelia. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant? No questions, comments? Open it to the public.
Just questions at this time, commissioners.
To the chair. Just for curiosity, the business owner, first of all, I'm in favor of the project. When you say you have three staff that's on duty there, will there be any kind of oversight between that 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m.? Because I know your business hours are listed different. I'm just curious for my own information, because there could be a dead time where.
Yeah, the way we cover that, we have over 100, probably now about 120 cameras on the property. And that's, you know, something we've done for years. I believe now South City requires it because the other big corporate stores that's in the area has never spent money on putting cameras up, which me, makes no sense. I mean, it's not that you're going to stop anything with a camera, but you're going to prevent theft happening when people walk, soon as they walk into our office, they're going to see literally 10 flat-screen TVs with cameras everywhere. So somebody automatically knows that everything's being monitored, being watched. And then the other thing that occurs is when somebody gets to our facility, they have to punch in their keypad, which will be their individual gate code, and thus, we also monitor who's coming in and who's going out. That's where we cover, you know, we're pretty proud to say that, I mean, we literally have had one incident in those eight, 17, 18 years we've been around now, so that's how we cut, that's what we cover.
Thank you. Very good. Like I said, I am in favor of the project. I just wanted to, for my own edification. Thank you. Very good.
Yeah, no problem. And if anybody has any other questions, I'll feel free to answer.
Any other questions from the commission? Does any member of the public wish to address the commission on this item at this time? Please raise your, raise hand feature to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Did we receive any public comments?
And we did not receive any public comments on this item.
It will close the public hearing. And we will turn it, the matter over to the commissioners for discussion. Vice Chair Zhang.
Very straightforward project. I'm in support to it.
Commissioner Evans.
I agree. It is very straightforward, very cleanly done, laid out, and very much needed in South City, so I'm very happy to support this project.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I think that the SEQA determination makes sense, and the use permit is logical, and I don't have any other comments.
Commissioner Pino's.
I echo all my fellow commissioners. I don't think there's anything I need to add.
Commissioner Faria.
No comments. Like I said, in favor of the project, and a lot of my questions were answered during the presentation. And I do like the aspect that it is a building where it's not the existing storage units, which are very visible and all kind of look the same, so I'm pleased with that. I'm in favor.
Commissioner De Paz Fernandez.
Nothing to add, same thing, favor of the project. Big need. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. You're a successful business person. You've been here for a long time, and I agree that you do run a clean operation, which is evident by low incident rates, and the area is well-kept, so I'm in favor of converting it and an approval for the project. We have roll call, please. Would.
We, we need a motion first.
Sorry. Any motions?
I'll do it. I move to make SEQA determination and approve project subject to the attached conditions of conditions of approval, including the errata that was included tonight.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Chair Shahadeh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Faria.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Funes.
Yes.
And Commissioner De Paz Fernandez.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Good luck on the project. Victoria, thank you, and welcome to the planning department.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Item number four.
Item number four is report regarding consideration of a conditional use permit, design review, and transportation demand management plan for the repurposing of a structure into commercial and office space and a parking reduction at 201 Baden Avenue in the downtown transit core zoning district and a Class 1 Section 15301 categorical exemption under SEQA in accordance with Title 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair. I'm going to enter in the report once we start public hearing. We good to go, Chair?
Yeah, I will open the public hearing. Call for staff report.
Perfect. That's requesting that we continue this item to a date certain, November 3rd. That'll be the first meeting in November. And we're requesting that you just open the public hearing and continue it tonight. That'd be the action.
Do I hear a motion? To accept? Continuing the.
I'll make the motion. We continue to the November. I missed the November date meeting of the.
November 3rd.
3rd, thank you.
And I second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Shahadeh.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Faria.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner De Paz Fernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Funes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item will be continued to November 3rd.
Next on the agenda, item number five.
Item number five is report regarding consideration of a use permit, design review, tentative parcel map, master sign program, transportation demand management plan, and environmental consistency analysis with the downtown station area plan, specific plan, environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act to allow two office R&amp;D buildings totaling approximately 541,000 square feet ancillary uses and associated parking at 100 East Grand in the Transit Office Research and Development Zoning District. And items 5A and 5B are the associated resolutions.
Okay, since this item was continued, public hearing. Call for a staff report.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair Shahadeh. I'm Adina Friedman, Principal Planner. I'll be giving the staff report tonight. Oh, let me share my screen. Here we go. Okay, so the item tonight that I'll be presenting is the 100 East Grand Project, which is an office and R&amp;D project right adjacent to the Caltrain Station in the east of 101 area across from. There we go. So the slide that's up now in front of you shows the project site, and it's adjacent, it's directly adjacent to the southeast of the new Caltrain Station. It's also directly south of the 121 East Grand Project, which the commission reviewed and recommended approval of several weeks ago. So the project is being proposed by Alexandria Real Estate, who is a familiar face here in South San Francisco, having developed much of the R&amp;D biotech uses that we have in the east of 101. The proposal in front of you tonight is for two R&amp;D office buildings, a total of about 541,000 square feet, a parking garage totaling 780 spaces, open space amenities, supporting ancillary commercial and service uses, as well as extensive right-of-way and infrastructure improvements. Now, after, I'm going to give a brief presentation, and then the applicant's team is here as well to go a little bit more into the design details of the site. The applicant is requesting the following entitlements: a use permit for a parking reduction, a design review permit, a transportation demand management plan, tentative parcel map, a master sign program, and a SEQA determination. In terms of design review, the design review board reviewed this project on November 21st of last year. The board supported the design and the landscape and requested several changes to the landscape plan and the materials. The applicant resubmitted the, the application with the requested changes, and with that, the design review board recommended project approval to the planning commission. In terms of the parking reduction, I'm going to go through what's being proposed compared to the current requirements as well as compared to the updated zoning requirements, which the commission just reviewed a couple of weeks ago and which the council will be reviewing next week. So the parking that is being proposed is 780 spaces in a parking structure. The proposed ratio is approximately 1.44 spaces per 1,000 square feet of R&amp;D use. Under our current zoning, the current requirements for this location and this type of use would be two spaces per 1,000, and there would be a requirement for just over 1,000 parking spaces. However, as the commission knows, our parking policies are changing with our new general plan, and we're really focusing on transportation demand management strategies, focusing on providing less parking, particularly in areas like this that are directly adjacent to a Caltrain Station, one of the best transit locations in the region. And with that, the, the parking requirements are moving to a maximum instead of a minimum. So under the new requirements, the, the maximum parking spaces that would be allowed would be 812 spaces. But the current requirements are in place as of today, so the applicant is requesting a parking reduction to be consistent with the zoning that is in place as of right now. With that, the parking that's being proposed is 780 spaces, so about a 230-space reduction over what is currently being, currently required, yet would be considered consistent with the new zoning that will hopefully be in place later this year. I hope that wasn't too confusing, but I thought it was important to talk about what's in place now, but what, what we will have very currently. Um, with that, the TDM plan is, is quite related to the parking reduction. This project has proposed to have a 45% drive-alone mode share. It is right next to Caltrain, as I mentioned. It's an excellent TOD location in terms of being directly accessible to Caltrain. It's also accessible to multiple SAM trans routes in terms of being directly accessible to Caltrain, it's also accessible to multiple SAM trans routes as well as commuter shuttles, both public and private to reach the BART station. And the applicant has provided a robust TDM plan with four categories to achieve this mode share. They're in the categories of infrastructure such as pickup and drop off zones, walkability, improved pedestrian links to Caltrain and the downtown, having bike repair and parking on site. Having onsite amenities and services. Programs and services include shuttles, carpooling and van pooling, services and amenities that support trip reduction, marketing and information, so pushing out information about alternative mode shares to the people who will work in these sites. And as well as leasing and reporting. So having an onsite TDM coordinator, the inclusion of TDM measures and leases and annual reporting and communication to the city on how the project is achieving the TDM goals. I also wanted to point out that the applicant's TDM plan noted that with the post COVID environment, increased work from home and flexible schedules, we will likely see an additional contribution to trip reduction beyond what we're, you know, necessarily achieving through the TDM measures themselves. And that's true, I think, for this project and other projects as well. This application also includes a master sign program, which includes campus identity signage, building signage and waifan finding signage. The design review board also reviewed the sign proposal, made some recommendations on the parking garage identity signage and supported the design with the updated changes to the parking garage identity signage, which is what is in front of the commission tonight. That, I'm gonna talk about the sequoia analysis. The downtown station area plan EIR was a program EIR. The applicant has prepared and the city reviewed an environmental consistency analysis. The finding of this analysis is that this project is within the scope of the downtown station area plan EIR and no new environmental document is needed. This is per the Sequoia Guidelines Section one five one six eight. This project is also, in addition to being within the scope of the previously prepared EIR, this project is statutorily exempt from sequoia because it meets a certain set of criteria. It is a commercial project with a floor area ratio greater than point seven five, this project actually has a floor area ratio of two point five, which is consistent with our zoning. It is within a transit priority area and it implements a specific plan that has a certified EIR. So there's several different sequel measures in place to find consistency. And it is also subject to all of the relevant mitigation measures that would be included in the downtown station area plan EIR. Just gonna quickly talk about some of the project benefits when considering this project. This project will be redeveloping underutilized industrial and warehouse properties. It is a high quality employment development adjacent to the Caltrain Station. The project applicant is proposing to improve pedestrian and bike facilities, infrastructure and access throughout the site and surrounding site. It will be implementing the downtown station area specific plan and the general plan, both the existing nineteen ninety nine general plan and the SHAPE SSF general plan that will be in place hopefully soon. They are proposing all electric buildings. And then I've also listed out the impact fees that the applicant would be required to pay that would contribute to improvements both in this area of the city and throughout the city as needed. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt resolutions making findings and approve the one hundred East Grand Office R and D project in front of you this evening. I am going to introduce Teresa Nema with Alexandria Real Estate. And she is going to present on behalf of the applicant and introduce the architecture team as well. So I'm just going to shot stop sharing my screen. There we go, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the city. Um, let's see. Okay, great, and Tony, you helped move everybody over.
I am on.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, and thank you very much Adina for that very clear presentation. We are very happy to be here tonight in front of you with this spectacular project at an incredible location. As Adina pointed out, not only is it at the doorstep of the Caltrain stop in South San Francisco, but it is also a very easy walk to the vibrant downtown that downtown South San Francisco has become. And therefore, it really is a place we think that is going to bring together the two sides east of one oh one to the downtown. We've been working on this project in a team collaborative effort. We've been working together with the property owner Prologis. We've been working with a great design firm, Zimmer Gunswill Frasca, ZGF, who you will hear from tonight. And there's been a number of team members involved. This project brings a couple of really beautiful buildings to the front door of Sam, South San Francisco. So we, we really look forward to hearing from you tonight and we took to heart what the design review committee had to say. We responded in kind and we think we have a project that we hope you'll agree with us is gonna be a benefit to your community. So with that, I will turn it to, I believe, Brawlio Batista at ZGF, who will do the presentation and share his screen.
Yes, thank you Teresa for that great introduction and thank you Adina for the very thorough description of the project and its impacts. It's a pleasure to come before the planning commission, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Brawlio Batista, I am a design partner with ZGF Architects based in Los Angeles, California and also Portland, Oregon. I'm joined here by two excellent members of the team, Amanda Snellson, our very talented project architect and Tyler Ashworth, Ashworth, our project manager. And so with no further ado, we'll share a brief overview of the project. And we hope that you like it as much as we have, we're very proud of our collaboration with the Ari on this. All right, let's.
It was up momentarily.
There it is.
Okay, can you see the screen now? Full screen?
Yep, I can see it. Thank you Amanda. All right, so let's jump right in and go to the first slide. So we'll brief overview of the project context and site, Adina and Teresa already described the key lynchpin location of the site, and here it is, the, the larger sort of super block indicated in red and our P-shaped site, if you will. And you can see here at the confluence of Caltrain and the, and the one oh one and also downtown. It is really a threshold and a gateway site between downtown South San Francisco and R and D district of the city. Next. And building on the idea of connections that has already been part of the thinking on this site, we are enhancing the connectivity and the gateway qualities of this site between east and west and also north and south. So the first thing that's driving our planning is the idea of pedestrian connectivity and creating a very pleasant environment, which is consistent with the South, South San Francisco Downtown Station Area Plan from twenty fifteen. And we've identified Sylvester Road, which is currently a north-south sort of industrial access drive as an opportunity to create a new pedestrian environment that would tee off into East Grand and provide a safe and pleasant connection to Caltrain Station and also to the new tunnel connection, enhancing the sense of connection, not only between east and west, but also to the south and providing for opportunities for rails to trails, if and when it does get realized to be a part of this continuum of urban experience here. So this is our main site plan and here we have overlaid our primary pedestrian circulation and the primary vehicular circulation. You see the two buildings which run primarily in the east-west orientation, Building A, Building B, and the garage, which is tucked in the southern portion of the site between the off-ramp of the one oh one and some industrial parcels that are just to the east. So the project is developing Sylvester Road for the stretch of it that is just east of the project, providing an improved pedestrian environment with drop offs, with main building entrances with a new plaza in reinforcing pedestrian circulation, connecting back to the Caltrain Station into the pedestrian tunnel at what will be a new signaled intersection at Sylvester Road and East Grand. As you know, cars are barreling down the, the off-ramp and so we are encouraging circulation across East Grand at that intersection with this site plan to provide both for safety and overall pleasant experience. Service access comes down Sylvester Road, continues along the so the industrial drive and comes along the back of the site between the buildings and the embankment up to the off-ramp, connecting that vehicular circulation to the service zones that serve both buildings. Parking comes down Sylvester Road as well. Parking access down Sylvester Road and we have two entrances allowing for in the future, also if Sylvester continues as part of what's indicated in the twenty fifteen plan for this area, allowing for the garage to be well positioned to provide improved egress from the site. And our landscape plan supports these notions, so you can see this large green area that's just to the north of Building A is meant to be a green feature that enhances the gateway qualities of the site as you're getting off the freeway from the northbound lanes and entering the site and also encouraging that pedestrian traffic to cross the street at that new signal intersection and, and, and westward towards the Caltrain Station. Some photos here on the right are just the existing context, they're one-story warehouse buildings that we, that will be replaced by the proposed buildings. And then on the other side, one block further to the east, we have the PGNE station as well. Here's a, a, a section in the plan of that landscape zone that is along East Grand, providing a green amenity, a visual amenity for those that are in the building and there's planned for this portion of the building to actually have restaurants, so an active use and providing for an improved visual amenity and maintaining pedestrian, the majority of the pedestrian circulation on the East Grand side, on the Sylvester side as well. Next. Next. The main concept is really about reinforcing Sylvester Road and the development of it as a environment where cars are slowed down, it's focused on the pedestrian and allowing building entrances to reinforce a sense of activity and also to having a plaza working off of it. The two buildings then run east-west to create that space in between that becomes the heart of the project. And there's further shaping of the building, which allows for better solar access and also for wind protection, which was part of the analysis that we did in conceiving these forms. Next. Furthermore, the buildings are developed with two very important notions, first to create an upgraded experience for the tenants here that is connected to nature, the ability to go out on terrace, on landscape terraces and also to relate to the idea of life sciences. And we were really inspired by the idea of the DNA helix to create terraces that are carved into these very simple forms, creating a sense of dynamism. So if you imagine a, a DNA helix rising right in the middle of the site somewhere in that plaza and if you extend the, the, the base pairs as lines, they cut through these buildings, creating these radiating terraces that you're seeing in the image to the right. This unique sort of form, this signature form, we also think helps to celebrate this threshold point, this threshold site, this gateway site that, that is a further enhanced landmark of the crossing between this, the, the downtown side and the research and development campus to the east. Next. And here's an enlarged view of that, you can see on many of the floors, the ability for the tenants to step out and the hat, and how that not only provides an enhanced experience of being here, we like to design buildings in which going to work is not something you have to, it's something you look forward to doing. But it also helps to animate the street environment in the three dimensions, so it's, it's about activity at the ground floor plane and a sense of transparency and creating some shade and landscape and opportunities for occupation and activity to manifest itself in these plazas and the street environment, but also animating it like a theater in the three dimensions as well. Next. On the freeway side, this carving gesture of the building manifests itself through a facade motif that creates this sort of implied undulating wave through these simple forms that again reinforces the gateway for those that are viewing these forms, whether they're driving on the one oh one or approaching it from the other side of the city. Next. And then on the east side, you can see the impact of these building forms on the Sylvester side and also the view back from the research and development district towards the building and how the sense of three-dimensional dialogue and activity going from the ground floor of the building and rising through some of the upper floors of the building, helping to give a distinct sense of identity and projecting a an overall ethos that's about human experience, about connection to nature and about sustainable design. And that's the presentation that we brought for you today, we are looking forward to your comments and and I think that's the last slide, right Amanda?
Yeah, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Does any of the commissioners have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, I really like that.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I'm sorry, if you could just reserve your comment until later and this time only ask questions of the applicant or staff.
To the chair. Uh, yeah, I have one question for the applicant and then another for the staff, I'll start with the applicant team question. I know that you don't know who your tenants are gonna be yet, but looking at the building program for A and B, does any of this contemplate laboratory space?
Yes, absolutely.
And I am, it said in the, in the initial presentation, it's gonna be all electric and I was just kind of interested to hear how that is planned and kind of the overall movement in life sciences towards going through all electric buildings, if you could just speak for a second about that, I'd be interested to hear.
Sure, absolutely Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity. Actually, this is not our first all-electric building in South San Francisco, the first one is under construction right now at seven fifty one Gateway. We designed that a few years ago and actually it's leased to Genentech. They leased that entire building and it's under construction, they're very pleased with the fact that it's going to be all-electric because it supports Genentech's own carbon goals. And we're finding quite honestly that the industry is responding very positively. It does require planning, it does cause challenges, it does in some. Cases end up not so much costing more, but creating more need for space, some of the. Equipment is larger than you would otherwise have, so it it's really just a, it's a coordination. Technical coordination issue and and the CGF might be able to answer more. Holy than I can, but that that's my sense of it.
Well, I'll just add, Teresa, that we're very proud that we're able to do that because many clients aren't ready to. Make those sacrifices, if you will, of accommodating larger space for equipment and all of that. As we know, the more we can eliminate a carbon emissions on-site. We are setting up these buildings for as the grids become cleaner and cleaner. For us to work towards a future where carbon emissions can be completely eliminated from our society.
That's great, it's also consistent, I think, with what the city's trying to do with our own climate action goals. My second question for staff about the. New signal at Sylvester Road, I mean, we we just saw recently, Adina, you mentioned the project across the street at one-twenty. And then just thinking about how we have the one-on-one ramp coming off basically at the intersect, at the corner of this building. And the effect that's going to have on traffic coming off of the freeway. People trying to get to the site, coming off of Grand Avenue from one-on-one, traveling southbound. And so what the coordination is going to look like for creating that intersection, what the signal is going to be like a. A full-on light signal or a beg button, or if there's going to be turning only lanes, just trying to consider like the true impact of. The cumulative development in this corner.
Sure, I can speak to that, it's going to be a collaborative effort. Between, you know, there's going to be other projects coming in in this area, one hundred East Grand. I'm sorry, one twenty-one East Grand on the north side. And the commission is going to see a few other projects coming in in this vicinity as well. We've conditioned the project that a signal is required at this. At this intersection, the exact details and design are still to be worked out and it will have to be a collaborative effort. Between all of these projects put together. I can pull up, or perhaps the applicant can pull up, in the plan set, there are some. Concept designs for how the signal would operate, if it would help, I can't. Remember off the top of my head, but.
Amanda, do you have that handy?
Yeah, I'm looking for it now, I can see.
Thank you.
Pull it up. I got it. Might take me a minute.
One thing I failed to mention is that obviously the the buildings respond to Sylvester because it's a safer environment, we're trying to. Keep pedestrians away from that off-ramp turn as much as possible. But we also saw potential for future plans in which that off-ramp configuration may change, it may it may be kept elevated. Which would allow for enhanced pedestrian connections directly north of our project and into the Caltrans station and the tunnel. So we've actually made a slight modification based on that, on the north, on our north facade. That would allow for a future entry to be placed right there. And so at which point that changes, the building would be able to be more easily modified and reinforce new pedestrian patterns.
Correct, and the major, the pedestrian pathway, one of the reasons why there's not. A sidewalk, you know, a public sidewalk on that south side of Grand Avenue is to is to route the pedestrians coming from Caltrain. To the north. So they're not running, you know, so they're not trying to make that. Connection across the off-ramp, so they would come out of Caltrain, cross to the north. Walk in front of one twenty-one East Grand and then cross at Sylvester.
It will be the first point where they would be able to cross and connect to a sidewalk right there.
So this is not, you know what, this, this is, I'm going to show. Just for some context. The East Grand access study, I think that's probably. The best thing. To show, so I'm just going to show, this is just a drawing that shows how this intersection could be designed. So basically. So this would be the new, it would be a new signalized intersection here, if you can see my screen at East Grand, this is Sylvester. And there would be. Two through lanes and then a turn lane into Sylvester. For the people who are coming off of. One-on-one coming from the south. Coming off of the off-ramp. I know this is really hard to see, I'm not sure if this is helping or not.
Adina, I have a question, it's, you can't, is there going to be two lanes? On both sides, or will be four lanes on East Grand?
It will be.
It's the street's too small. To accommodate four lanes. To leaving, you know, the exit.
There, there's one to the north.
There's only one. But is that going to be enough? Is that going to be adequate for the flow of traffic?
I mean, it will be, it is, it will be designed to be adequate for the flow of traffic. So we're requiring these projects to work together, to come up with the. Traffic solution that will work for all of the, for the entire vicinity and implement the. Transportation improvements that the the city has developed for this area, there's roadway improvements, so it's a combination of. Roadway improvements, pedestrian improvements. And bicycle improvements as well as access to the Caltrain station. So we're really trying to balance all of that in this area with the limited right-of-way that's available.
To the chair, this is Commissioner DePasse for NEX. My my question, it's two questions. Including that kind of combination of the four lanes. Is there any talk, especially during construction? To kind of reinforce this transition from, because he goes from two lanes to three lanes to. There's a lot of confusion and there's no construction, there's nothing happening right now. So I mean, if I would, I would actually advocate to reinforce that before even anything happens, so. I know it's not going to be permanent, but I think that needs to be also, you know, that I've seen almost. Accidents happen and there's nothing going on right now. And then my second one, while I know that the plan is to redirect pedestrian traffic. I do, is there, is there like a plan to have any sort of natural barriers that will prevent people from. Sort of jailwalking, to not go all the way around, right, it's like, oh, there's no, there's nobody coming from the freeway, it's okay, I'll cross, right, it's a short cross. So is there any, you know, bushes, right, that will prevent people like, I'm not saying put a fence and say you're not cross, but. I think if that was to be incorporated to allow for more of a smooth. But also pleasant transition from, especially since we're trying to push people to take Caltrain and commute. That will be a couple of my questions if there's in the plan right now for those two things.
Yeah, so the exit from the Caltrain station, when when people exit from the Caltrain station, they're. They're going, they exit somewhat north of the site, on the north side of the of the. North side of the intersection, so naturally they're going to be leaving Caltrain through that exit, so there's not going to be that desire and then there's the large. There's a large, like, what do you call it, a median or. If that's a pork chop thing, like in the middle of the street, I don't know if that's the right word. So that that is a natural barrier from people leaving Caltrain. In terms of people, in terms of folks who are leaving, like, let's say you're leaving work. You work at one hundred East Grand and you're going to Caltrain. The entries and exits are on Sylvester, so the the. Are oriented towards Sylvester, so to create that as the center of gravity. So when you are leaving, entering and exiting, you are kind of directed to go out on Sylvester. And then to go up Sylvester and and there we go, this is great, and the applicants put a lot of thought into that. The treatment of Sylvester and all the pathways here, so you can kind of see how people are. Funneled out of the building, like if you're funneled, if you're leaving building A, you're sent out to Sylvester to the intersection to cross, so that's the natural. Pathway to cross and go towards the Caltrain station. There will also be pretty significant wayfinding signage. Both, you know, at this location and when future projects come in as well. In terms of directing pedestrians how to get to and from the Caltrain station.
It's a layered approach, you know, the first is what Adina just articulated, all of our entries are directly working off of Sylvester. And then are the development of the the street edge along East Grand. Actually uses not only, you know, some planting, but also a little bit of burming. To help make that walk less visible from the other side. And and we also have no building entries here, there's just a a an egress stair exit that you see here on the right-hand side. And then there is a fire, a path here that that provides access to the to the fire room. From that location, so. That's what we're able to do on this side and then if there. If there's the need to create any additional measures to discourage crossing on the other side of the street. I think that that could be part of the consideration, the conversation with those who are developing that site to the north of us.
I was going to just take it, that's helpful, that second part of the question.
Yeah, thank you, more just a question to the development team. First of all, I do agree, I'd be like more quantification at forty-five percent non-drive, I do agree, the location is probably the most optimal spot. To achieve that goal with Caltrain being there, not having tenants there, I'm just curious, how did we arrive at that forty-five percent? Because a lot of TDMs, I'll be very blunt, are a crystal ball.
The the good news, Commissioner, is that we have been doing this for about twenty years in South San Francisco. And we have seen the evolution of the thought process and the thinking. In terms of the employees that are working for the tenants that lease space at our buildings, more and more we're finding. Quite honestly, the younger population just not wanting to drive and very much looking for other options.
Okay, but, because like we said, which I will comment more on in my closing statements, because. It is a partnership out in that area when we have what's going on out in that region with all the developments. And all the roads, whether it be East Grand, whether it be Dubuque, whether it be New Roads. That area is being developed with with necessary space, and I think it's located well for the. For the transit corridor we have there, but there's always that thing, because even when we go to our general plan. The TDM was stated as something that may not be mitigated, so that always is a concern, because it's. It's the unknown, but again, and I I agree with your statement, I was. Out working in that park, being the oldest senior member of this by age. I was out in that park in the eighties, I know how how it's evolved to progress where it's at now, and it has improved. But again, I just want to be heads up on it before, so we don't have. Situations that we had out in East Grants that started to develop back in the eighties, nineties and so on, thank you.
Commissioner Korea, I'd also like to just add as well that the forty-five percent is consistent with our. New TDM requirements, that this is what the city is requiring, this is what we need to see. In order to make traffic work and to reduce greenhouse.
And I and I agree with you, Adina, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that, just like, for example. I'm very optimistic on stuff, you know, everything does work itself out, but. I I'm also one that won't put my head in the sand either and say, oh, it'll be okay, because I. Thank you.
I will say, you know, Alex, I'll give Alexandria a shout out for doing, you know, we do TDM reporting every year and they are consistently. Meeting and exceeding the targets for their existing projects, so we have a lot of of faith in them being able to meet. You know, really, a really high new standard.
Congratulations, pass it on to some of the other residents, it would be helpful, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Day, Vice Chair Day, sorry.
That's okay, I wouldn't have comments, no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Evans. Unmute yourself.
I don't have any questions, it's a great presentation, it's very thorough from. Staff side and from the developer side. And I just have a couple of comments that I'll wait till we close the public hearing.
No questions, just compliments.
Yeah, I mean. I agree, I, my like a project, you know, Alexandria has been a long-term partner with the city. My question is. The construction, there's going to be another project across the street, massive. And we're looking at two years. It's going to impact exit. It's going to impact, you know, residents coming to work or. Coming to the area. How are you going to coordinate with? The project across the street, I know it's the city's responsibility, but how can we? Try to avoid and minimize the disruption over a long time, at least two years between both projects. What actions are you taking? To mitigate the impact?
Well, it begins with communication. We actually have established. A collaborative effort with all of the property owners and the developers in that zone, in that area. And we are actively talking about. Coordinating the building of the infrastructure, right, Sylvester Road has to be built, all the infrastructure, the crossings. All of the electrical equipment, even before we get to our sites, so there's a lot of coordination that's involved. We do have that experience and in places that have been even tighter. Downtown San Francisco, for instance, that has happened many times where you've got projects right next to each other. All it requires, quite honestly, is a collaborative effort and the city keeping everyone. True to what they say they're going to do.
And we, and I can speak to that too, we have a project, we have an internal process, we have our construction coordination committee. Which has, is tasked with exactly that task and, you know, we have a consultant on board who helps run our committee and really. Holds all of the developers and the construction teams. He holds them to their schedules, he holds them, you know, he he requires. Information about any kind of traffic closures, major deliveries, unusual hours of operation, that type of thing. And he does a great job of communicating and kind of making sure all the city divisions. Communicate internally as well with engineering, police, planning, building, et cetera. And of course, you know, pushing back out the city's requirements to the development teams as well, so. We're we're definitely aware, you know, this this is very much on the construction coordination committee's radar. This portion of the city is is going to be, you know, a very big, well, the downtown has been a really big focus for the past few years. With all the residential, you know, that that will continue, but I think this area. Our efforts on, in terms of construction coordination and management are going to shift quite a bit. To this area directly adjacent to the Caltrain station the next few years.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission?
As Commissioner DePasse Fernandez, I think it kind of goes back to my my first question regarding the. Current improvements that could possibly be looked into as that coordination goes on on that exit. Seems to be, you know, there could be some improvements that could make it safer for. Maybe no pedestrians at this point, because I don't see a lot of pedestrians in the area right now, but. Definitely, you know, as we start seeing more traffic on on, you know, construction, you know, trucks and deliveries and things like that and. I think that would help. Stack coordination, I mean, it's it's literally, it's a small quarter of a mile or period of that street, but it sometimes gets so hectic and. You know, people coming from the freeway speed and to transition into this dangerous curve, which that was a huge improvement by, so thank you, but. Yeah, I think a little more coordination in that area as this transition is experiencing will be really helpful. You know, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Any other commissioners? Now we'll open it, does any member of the public wish to address the commission on this item at this time? Please use the raised hand feature to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. At this time, I will ask the clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Chair, we have not received any um, emails or voicemail comments, and I do not see any, oh wait, let me look. I do not see any raised hands at this moment.
Hearing no public comments, we will close the public hearing. We, sorry, we'll close public comments.
Chair, you are closing the public.
Public hearing, it's the matter of the commission, sorry. All right, commissioners, comments. Vice Chair Zhang.
Thank you, thanks for giving me the first spot. So I'm pretty sure a lot of people is gonna praise the architecture, so coming from that architectural background, I I kind of wanna throw in some input, so. So, you know, when we're in design studio, we talk about how to create a box, and then we carve it, we twist it, uh, and we change material, change facial, uh, add layers, but everything within a box. So for for a project this large, like, you are actually exemplifying what architecture school teaches us. So what I want to say, like, to the architects, like, um, the carving, the solid void, the green band that climbs up, the intertwining, even the box that kind of semi-twists on its own as a fill-up. It's crazy, like, it's subtle, like, if people don't study architecture, they see a building that's like, kind of interesting, but I actually see all those ideas actually got implemented. So I wish at the construction document phase, it get kept pretty similarly, like, I really, I really want to see that carving and those intertwining happening, it's, it's gorgeous. Thanks.
Commissioner Fariah.
That was gonna be one of my comments, too, because having been on the commission, I also compliment the design, it's kind of nice to look at a building that's not rectangle and has the cutouts, I think the design, it it'd be eye-catching, its location by the freeway will be eye-catching, I think it's, it's just a beautiful building. I am in support of the project, even though I was discussing the things about the TDM. The the phrase, what the, what one of your presenters said, it's a partnership, takes the whole group working together. And like anything else, once something is developed and grows, um, it it'll evolve and changes will be done to make it be smooth. But again, I will support the project, and again, the building, what the Vice Chair Zhang said, I like the building, it's beautiful. We have nothing like that in the city to look at.
Commissioner Murphy.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, I don't have any um, issue with the requested parking reduction. I think it makes a lot of sense for this site, and it also is in alignment with what we're envisioning with our new general plan, so I think that's all good. Um, the design, this is an interesting project, because it's not like our other East of one oh one projects, and that people in the city are gonna know which building you're talking about, um, because of its location. So I think the um risks you're taking with having these step balconies, um, is, it's gonna um, pay off. I think it's, it's a nice way to connect downtown to East of one oh one and connect people who live in South City, but maybe not necessarily work in South City to to that side of the freeway. Um, I think the tentative map request is um, makes sense, I think it, that's fine. Um, it's consistent with downtown station area plan, and the the SEQA checklist is comprehensive and and applicable, so um, all in all, I think it looks like, oh, and the fact that you're doing another all-electric lab space, I think it's really exciting and probably gonna start being the trend in what we see with applications for our life sciences buildings going forward, so. Um, yeah, that's great.
Commissioner DePaz Fernandez.
Exactly, what Commissioner heard you say. Uh, no, but uh, definitely great, I mean, great design, I mean, you you saw Commissioner Zhang, I was very excited, I mean, it's a beautiful design. Uh, definitely something different, um, and I think there's a couple of the projects in the area that are also gonna be very different and unique uh, that we saw the last couple of meetings, so, uh, very excited, I do appreciate, you know, kind of doing those natural bears, or like, kind of like, some ways to avoid that, I mean, I I'm usually, you know, if we can put something, trees, or like you said, a little height, rather than put a fence, I'm always like a good proponent of that, and finding ways to maximize the space where there's, where like, like a picnic table or somewhere, someone can walk through and work, so. Um, I think just my only two concerns, I, you know, if I would avoid them, and it seems like it's in the radar, and we're, we're able to do that, but also, um, you know, I don't, I don't find anything else in order to not, you know, support this project, so appreciate.
Commissioner Evans.
Um, I I love the project, I think it's a beautiful, um, unique presentation, I love the design, and I love the concept behind the design. And I, my only concern is that we keep very close tabs on the the traffic, and particularly during construction. And everything that we, you want to do, uh, in terms of your your circulation, make sure that that happens. And I, it's aspirational, and you want to make sure that you can deliver. So again, you go back to the partnership with the city and the other developers and yourself, you just want to kind of keep an eye on that, make sure that that comes to fruition. But beautiful design, very innovative. Thank you.
Commissioner Fariah. Fariah.
Yeah, I mean, I, what I wanted to say was that it is gonna give the city a lot of architectural interest, like the specific design of it going down and creating more of a emphasis on pedestrians. I think it's gonna be really beneficial for that corner specifically, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Hey, I'd like to echo my commissioners' comments. I agree, the design, I commend, you know, the talented architect team. It's a very challenging spot with limited, the, you know, exit entrance points, and you did meet the challenge. The concern about traffic during construction, I think is valid. We've known, we've worked with Alexandria, and, you know, it's been a long-term partnership with the city, and we hope it continues. The design elements are great, and I think it's also gonna put Alexandria on the map. Everybody driving by one oh one is gonna see Alexandria now. So I commend you, and I approve, I approve of the project. There's no further comments, any more comments from the commission? Hearing none, would any commissioner like to make a motion? Where should we make the two motions?
We have two separate motions, one for the um, first, the SEQA resolution, yeah.
I can do it. There you are.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move to adopt the resolution, making a secret determination.
I'll second.
Second, bye. Wolf Hall, please.
Uh, Chair Shahada.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zhang. Think you're unmute.
Unmuted.
Yes.
Commissioner Fariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Funes.
Yes.
Commissioner DePaz Fernandez.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can't do the second one. I move to adopt the resolution approving planning entitlements.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, Chair Shahada.
Yes.
Chair Zhang, or Vice Chair Zhang.
Yes.
Commissioner Fariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes.
Commissioner Funes.
Yes.
And Commissioner DePaz Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, and we appreciate all the community benefits and the partnership.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your kind comments.
Items from staff.
Uh, we have one item, which is that the October twentieth Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. We, if we have not already sent out a cancellation notice, we will in the next few days. And then we will see you all again on November third.
Any items from the commission? Hearing none. No comments. Does any member of the public wish to further address the commission? Is there any comments?
We do not have any raised hands, and we have not received any additional comments from members of the public, or any comments from members of the public, I should say.
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Have a nice weekend.
Bye, everyone.
Yeah.
Bye. I think everyone.
Everybody, see you in November.